All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And the public hearing is on the five-year capital investment plan. And this will be the first reading. The next one will be on 10 July 23. And I will read this first portion to you all. Per Title 24, Chapter 117, Section 4385, not less than 30 nor more than 120 days after a proposed plan is submitted to the legislative body of a municipality under Section 4384, the legislative body of a municipality with a population of more than 2,500 persons shall hold two or more such hearings. Failure to hold a hearing within 120 days shall not invalidate the adoption of the plan or amendment. The legislative body may change the proposed plan or amendment, but shall not do so less than 15 days prior to the final hearing. If the legislative body at any time makes substantial changes in the concept, meaning or extent of the proposed plan or amendment, it shall warrant a new public hearing under subsection A of this section. If any part of the proposal is changed, the legislative body at least 15 days prior to the hearing shall file a copy of the changed proposal with a clerk of the municipality, with any individual or organization requesting a copy in writing, and with the planning commission. The plan shall be adopted by a majority of the members of its legislative body -- I wanted to say broccoli -- body at a meeting which is held after the final public So hopefully you've had a chance to see this, the five-year plan. Any issues with it? Council members? Public?
I have one question. Towards the end, and I don't have it in front of me, so I don't know which number it is. I'm curious how flowers get to be in the plan. They're hardly a capital expense. It seems a little bizarre to me.
I guess they wanted to have some accountability for what we spend all the time for flowers, because we get that all the time.
I have no issue about flowers, but don't it belong in that budget when you're general?
Well, all of this venture would go into the general anyways.
But it's not a capital investment. Flowers are not a capital investment.
All right, so we'll bring that up to -- Becky, you want to break that down and bring it to --
And I want to say I'm not complaining about the flowers. I like the flowers.
No, that's fine. You had your say, and --
I had a question, too. There were some mathematical errors that were in the report. There was a couple of places where they had, like, it totaled -- the total was 20,000, but the amounts were 15, so you might want to go through and check the math.
Same place as the flowers.
Flowers?
The flowers grew 20, 23. Thank you.
Okay.
Page 11.
We'll have that, and hopefully on the 10th of July, those numbers have been corrected.
Thank you.
But like I said, this is all a good plan, and all it is is kind of like a dream sheet, because things do change. But at least it's a plan. You have to have one, so, yes.
I did have a question, and maybe this is something elementary, but for the fiscal year 2023, page 5, the paving estimates, there's a committed fund balance of 154,000, but then the total that it looks like we'll need is 452,000. So I'm just wondering, where does the other 300,000 come from?
Tom? On page 5?
Page 5, yeah.
We committed fund balance of 154,000, 347.
Yeah.
And then it goes up to 452. Could you explain that?
Because I'm utilizing the funds from the committed. I'm trying -- going to try to utilize the funds from the committed.
Okay.
Oh, I see. So you know you're not going to get them all from the committed. You'll get some funds from somewhere else?
Well, from the capital funds is where I want to get them.
Oh, okay.
Typically, in a budget, when you say a paving, they'll take it out of the capital fund, even though that -- and then do a general entry, take out from the committed after the fact. So I can overspend, and I know that money's there. It's from the previous year.
Oh.
I just was curious. We have a contract that we were going to pay and did pay, I think $90,000 a year for any kind of repairs that would be needed on the water tower, number one, the one we have right now. And then it would be for the next 10 years, I think, 22,000 per year. And that's mentioned in the capital plan. But I thought that repairs and things like that are paid just out of normal expenses, that it's not capitalized. And then I couldn't see the 22,000 per year that we would be paying for the next 10 years, which I think is the place we're going to be in as of now. I couldn't see that in there. So I wasn't -- it was like mentioned, but I didn't see how it related.
So we entered a 15-year contract for the water tower. We've already paid the 91,000 for five years. We've paid the 22,260, and it fluctuates up to 30,000 throughout the remaining portion of those 15 years. So that is a capital investment. Any other repair and maintenance would typically be in my water.
So the number for the five years' worth of about 22,000 is actually in there somewhere? I don't have the capital plan. Thank you.
Any further questions on the five-year plan? All right. Then hopefully the two errors will be fixed by the 10th of July for the second hearing. And I will close the public hearing at --
Eight?
Eleven?
Six.
Six, 11. Well, my problem is for 30 years, I used 200 hours and 18 years. Okay? So now we'll go into the regularly scheduled council meeting. And I've already called everybody to order to make it official. I've called it to order again. And present, myself, Kevin Charbonneau, Chris Fasson, and Clark Curtis on the council, Rebecca Terian as the programs director, and James D. Johnson, City Clerk, Treasurer. And item number two is additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda. There's going to be two changes to the agenda, and that's going to -- we're going to table number six and table number 11 until our next meeting. And hopefully I have the power to go ahead and table it, or do I have to go through the -- but we're going to table under changes to the agenda. We're going to table number six and number 11 until the next meeting, which is on the 26th of June. Now we have a massive number of council meeting approvals. So do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of 15 May 23?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second? Let's -- a second.
We're allowed, since you're going to make a vote, to suggest that some part of those minutes, I believe, of May 15 should be amended. So do you want us to make our statements now or after the first and second?
When I get to second, you can say your spiel. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
I have a second now. Go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to give anybody an opportunity if they wanted to, and if they don't, I will.
Well, I'm looking right at you, ma'am.
All right. With respect to those minutes, I think they include a statement that Jennifer Bureley supposedly -- let me find that language that's used -- verbally assaulted a member of council.
Yes.
That is conclusory language. That's somebody -- that is somebody's interpretation of what she said. It could be written down that she made a comment about something, or it could be written down exactly what she said, or some of what she said. But those words are an opinion of somebody that I believe is faulty.
Those are my words, and rather than just discuss water and sewer, you can all say what -- everything's an interpretation. Well, in this case, I interpreted that after the scolding I received by not being educated enough by four women, that's an assault on me.
Whoa, you need attention, there, sir?
Yeah, it is. Yes, yes.
Wow.
Hold on, hold on. If we're going to interrupt, if we're going to interrupt, well, we don't need interruption. We can put a stop to it. Thank you. That's courtesy.
But, Mr. President, about a year ago, it had been written in that I complained about something, when all I had done was commented on it. And when I raised that point, it was changed from complain to comment.
I put that in there, so that's it. That was my perception that I was surely attacked that night. And I can do now, I'm not addressing it anymore. I put it in there, and do I have a motion and a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Did you say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
I do not. Mr. Wilson, I do not. May I suggest that we do put a direct quote in instead of that?
A direct quote, yeah, from the newspaper that --
Or from the recording or anything, just a direct quote of what was said.
Okay. Can we do that? Okay, so we want to approve the minutes. We would need an amendment on the comments by the public. And you can take it out of the recording.
Yeah.
Where I was basically told by four -- or four women were mentioned as trying to educate me, but I'm not learning well. So what do I do with this, Jim? Can I -- we have a motion to approve it.
I'll ask the chairman to bring it back.
Okay. So we draw my second. Okay? The second's withdrawn.
I withdraw my --
The motion's withdrawn, and we will redo the 15 May minutes with the additions that Mr. Fasson wanted. All right, I -- next is the minutes of 15 -- no, that was 15 May. I got mine along with -- yes, the sign. Special meeting of the 18th of May. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes of 15 May?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second.
I'm sorry, which year, what day are you talking about?
18.
I have a motion and a second. Do -- call those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And I may have given you mine, Jim, it doesn't matter, I'll sign this one. All right. Next one is to approve the minutes of 22 May, 2023. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes? I've got a 20 May also. All right. Good God, I'm late. 20 May. No, I've got them here, just trust me. There's 6 million of them. I don't have -- 20 May. Is that the one we're doing right now?
Yeah.
All right. 20 May, special meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes? I'll make that motion. I have a motion by Mr. Charbonneau. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, nobody's opposed? All those in favor, who said aye? 20. Oh, now we go on to 22 May. We have a motion to approve the minutes of 22 May 2023.
Can I say something for a motion? Mr. Fasson made the motion and seconded the motion.
On 23?
Yeah, I don't know who seconded it. I'm pretty sure he made it.
Just to prove that we changed it, I'll change it.
Yeah, okay. We have a motion.
We don't know who seconded it, do we?
No. We have to go back.
So how do you do it?
We just approve them, and then everyone make their argument.
We approve what changes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
No second, so we just --
Clark, second.
I seconded.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
I got my hearing aids into it. Okay. I have an approval and a second motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it for 22 May. 22 May. Oh, we're getting there, two to go. Now, the next one is to approve the minutes of the special council meeting on 24 May Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes? How many fat motions? Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And now the last one. Special council meeting we had on the 31st of May. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of 31 May 2023?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second. A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We took care of the lengthy number three. Now we have the comments by the public. We have quite a few, so you have two minutes, and hopefully they all are relatively polite. First one is Ann Sherrill, voting for the next mayor.
Yes, Mr. President. You said at the last meeting that the reason that you were going with an appointment versus an election was $1,000. An election is so important, and I don't have time to tell you about women who fought hard for the right to vote, never got it till 1920. Native Americans, African Americans, it goes on and on. You know the history. So to get to the point, I have here a $1,000 check. Let me finish.
I said, excuse me, Fernrook, is it a dead issue now?
It's not a dead issue.
As soon as these minutes are over and I get to speak and let you know that there will be --
But you're interrupting my two minutes.
She's her time. She reclaims her time.
Finish the potato check back.
No, no, I want to leave it there, and it's for you to have a special election so that that number drops out. And in addition, you have $6,000 in your budget left for this year until June 30th for elections. So I think there's enough money. And I wanted to let you know that it isn't just my check and my partner's check, but anybody who will do -- who will pay it forward and do a good act is included in our desire to have an election. Let me give you some specifics about why you should have an election, too. I mentioned last time that --
Give us some time.
I mentioned --
We're having an election.
I meant -- I'm sorry.
Elaine Dowell's here.
I meant, I can't hear that. I mentioned last time that you certainly shouldn't put yourself forward, all of you for mayor, since you assisted getting the last one out. But it's a horrible thing, and it's against any kind of precedent that you want to set, that the people who are being currently blamed in some small way for doing it --
You've got five seconds.
I'm sorry?
Your time is up, even when I interrupted, so I apologize for interrupting.
We're the people who do want an election.
We're having one.
No, we want it sooner than that, because the one you appoint now gets a leg up for the next election.
Ma'am, right now, you're saying what you don't know, because we haven't told you yet. Okay? We'll square the stuff away in a few minutes. There will be an election.
There will be an election.
That's what I just said. I'm trying to be very polite.
I'll take my check back.
Take your check back.
Thank you much.
The next one is Teresa Girard.
Hi, my name is Teresa Girard. I live in Newport City. In our last meeting, Mr. Charbonneau stated that he and other council members did not know what they had done to cause Mayor Barnes to resign. He claimed that he does not know how to respond to baseless allegations made by Mayor Barnes. To the city council members, I asked, did you congratulate Mayor Barnes when she was elected? Did you call to meet with her to ensure she was successful working with you to move Newport forward? Were you patient with her as she learned how to conduct the city's business? Or were you one of the people that wanted to see her fail? And did you help to create a hostile work environment instead of a collaborative team environment, working on the behalf of Newport residents? If you all reflect on your behavior and honestly feel you tried to help Mayor Barnes succeed, and that you tried to work collaboratively with her, good for you. If you did not work with her as part of a team, or if you behaved in an intimidating manner, then you are partly responsible for her resignation. If you were present when others were hostile or intimidating, or you knew of it and you did nothing, you are still complicit. Intimidating behavior has not been limited to your treatment of Mayor Barnes. At other city council meetings, I've seen members of the public intimidated, ridiculed, and mocked. Due to the conduct of some members of the council, it is not hard to believe that Mayor Barnes was intimidated. I don't know. I'll get back to you. And then actually have someone follow up with an answer to the question? When the question is asked over and over in frustration, and there is no answer provided that makes any logical sense, is the public to blame for asking it again? One more sentence.
One more.
Is this the Newport city we deserve? Do we want to be remembered as a city that is unkind to newly elected officials? Newport deserves a team of leaders working together for the benefit of the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And normally I won't respond, but yes, I met with Beth at Wendy's, her first trip ever to Wendy's.
Good for you.
Offered all the assistance she needed. Thank you. Next one is Heidi Eichenberger.
I have kind of three questions, well, not questions. First, I had emailed council for the past couple of years, and I wanted to say thank you to Clark, because he's the first one who's actually bothered to answer and very eloquently. 50% I agree with, but, okay, but I, you know, everybody else has never answered, and I find that a little bit offensive. We should have a voice. The other -- the question I have then is, who are you people answerable to? The members of council, who do you -- I mean, everybody's answerable to someone. Who are you responsible to?
Us.
Public.
So do you think, like, if you were to rate yourselves, do you think that you're answering well to them? And then my last little question here is, I appreciate Mr. Wilson last week saying that he wanted to save taxpayers' money about the elections, but I think I see here that you have a lawyer that's on these meetings all the time, and I'm assuming that he's cost at least $250 an hour. So, I mean, if you had good faith and you didn't have to put lawyers always on things, and even though you're pointing at this one, it doesn't really matter, you know, even if you, like, I think two weeks ago, you violated the law, but there's no recourse, so why have a lawyer in there anyway? So that's my two minutes.
Thank you very much for those comments. Next one is Susan Watson, General Ledger.
In the enormous amount of printouts that we received today with the agenda, the last 36 pages were called, it's called City of Newport General Ledger. In my experience, this is a trial balance, not a general ledger, but that's not what I'm talking, that's not, neither here nor there at this point. What I find is, in this general ledger of the general fund, you're showing three columns, budget, actual, and actual percentage of budget. Nowhere on this is there a date telling us when, what this pertains to. Is this budget for the year? Is it the budget for the year ending June 30th? If so, the actual, we haven't reached the end of the year, we haven't reached June 30th, so the actual can't be year-end, and therefore, there should be no comparison. Is it March or maybe December, actual? And I don't think we can say, if we knew if it were March, we can't say three-fourths of the actual, because you have a lot of seasonal --
-- which the council members were displeased. Whatever was said to the mayor on May 15th was sufficiently inappropriate to cause her to get up and walk out of that executive session. The council refuses to disclose these illegal discussions. The council claims protection of executive session as their justification, but this claim is ludicrous. The discussion was in violation of executive session. One cannot claim that executive session therefore provides protection. At the last council meeting, Mr. Charbonneau claimed that he had no idea what the council had done to cause accusations of bullying and intimidation to befall them. I ask you, Mr. Charbonneau, what did the council illegally say to Mayor Barnes during the executive session on May 15th that caused her to pick up and walk out? And why is the council refusing to disclose what it said to the former mayor? I suspect that the responses to these questions will provide answers for you.
-- transparency regarding issues we have been seeking for years now and have been ignored and chastised for making important questions in issuing -- in issues affecting all of us, which affect our personal finances and city operations. They all saw hope in Beth Barnes here. The alderman, along with the city manager, took it upon themselves to run the newly-elected mayor out of office. In the short 75 days Mayor Barnes was in office, she met with every single business owner on Main Street, the GM of Metalflex, the -- The GM of Metal Flex, the owner of the now-closed Newport Health Center, the County Hospitals Women's Association, NECA Director, the Director of the North County Country Career Center, Annie K. Broadcast, Elaine Collins, the Superintendent of Schools. She met with local and regional economic development organizations, Newport Downtown Development, NVDA, Diane Peel of Newport Mesh, a member of AOG Community Maritime, Ms. Goldstein, the Vermont Commissioner of Economic Development, Executive Director of the Rural Edge, met with staff members of our US Congresswoman, Becca Ballant, and US Senator Welch's office. She met with Ernie Pomelo to talk about the Waterfront Plaza, with Ted Brady, President of the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. He goes on and on. There's another forty different meetings that she held within that seventy-five days. So, in the same seventy-five days, the alderman violated open meeting laws,
Sir, your time is up.
violated sections of the city charter, warned in these two meetings of the city council. The city council and city manager have failed to uphold obligations to serve the community and to act in the best interest of the residents and have betrayed the public trust. Thank you. I will not be here for the rest of the meeting only because I love all of you, but it's my anniversary tonight.
Now, before we go into number five, I will let you all know that the city clerk treasurer received a request from the citizens to have another election. He will explain it and I believe it's going to be one August 23. In contrary to what I had been directed, I actually told my people that directed me, I'm glad because no matter who we would have selected, it's just more fuel to the fire. So, we will have an election and then whoever gets it, hopefully, it'll work out well. Okay?
Can we ask who directed you?
Jim, what?
Who directed you to play it the other way? You said that you were directed.
Counsel.
You guys...
No, not one with a C, one with an S. Right? Okay, Jim?
All right, so we did receive a notice request for election from twenty-five people. Amy Gillespie brought that in this morning. Charter does specify that. So, I talked this over with the city attorney and John. The meeting will be on August 1st. Okay, it can't be any earlier because I got audit going on. They will warn the meeting on June 26th, okay? And if your petitions are due in on that, on June 26th. They can't warn the meeting until petitions are in, okay? So, there's a two or three-week period there for people to get petitions in. Happened on August 1st. They'll warn it then. I have to post it, the warning, somewhere between thirty and forty days before that election. And it'll be published in the newspaper and the website around the 25th or 26th of July. So, the election is on August 1st.
And one other thing I think you failed to mention is it would be to, had we selected one here, it would have been to March 24. But the election will fill out Mayor, ex-Mayor Barnes's tour, which would have been March of '25. So, whoever wins on, it's not seven months, it'll be the full time.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. ... And just as a point of clarification, the petitions that Jim was talking about, I'm sorry, that Mr. Treasurer, Mr. City Treasurer was talking about, the petitions you were saying that have to be in from candidates to...
Petitions from candidates have, from candidates have to be in my office no later than 26.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, that's not a petition, this isn't a petition, it's a request.
Yeah, I know.
Mr. President, I'm assuming it's going to be a swing ballot?
Yeah, and you just like any other election.
On August 1st.
And how many signatures does a person have to get to be...
Thirty. And it has to be ready through the city.
So, now...
I'd like to say one more thing. I'd like to respond to the lawyer's comment. Although I sit here, I'm not part of the council, I don't have any kind of decisions, but I ride three of us downstairs and try very hard every day to keep the city in line, so not just one.
I'm aware.
Okay.
All right, item number five is the review of proposed contract for professional city administrative services. Anticipated executive session. We have two motions to go into executive session.
I move to find that premature general public knowledge of the city's draft contract for professional city administrative services would place the city at a substantial disadvantage because it would likely lead to the disclosure of attorney-client privileged and confidential communications.
First one, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Yes.
I don't know when else I can raise it, but it would be nice if the contract included how much that the person who is doing it would tell us how much time she spent on doing water and how much time she spent on doing sewer so that we would know how much money should be charged to those funds.
That'll all be worked out with the lawyers, okay? And for the contract, I doubt...
In the contract.
Going to get into specifics. It's an overall view of what she's going to be doing. So, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And now, we need a second motion to go into executive session.
I move to enter executive session under Title I, Vermont Statute Sanitated, Section 313A1A to discuss the draft contract for professional administrative services. Ask that city clerk and city attorney join the executive session.
Okay, I have a motion to go. Do I hear a second?
Counsel, if I may, do you want to have the, do you want Karen in the session as well?
Do you want Karen in?
Do I what?
Karen. Do you want Karen to have to be in the executive session as well?
Yeah, I want Karen, I want Mr. Johnson and Ms. Darian. Yes, and I know he's leaving shortly, so I have a motion.
Marilyn is on the line as well. She's on the phone. She will be part of the executive session, but she'd also include it as a city attorney.
Outstanding. Thank you. Did I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to go into the second portion of the executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Come on in, take a seat. I don't want to rush anybody. All right, with all that time you're out here in discussion, there's no action taken on the number five. The next item on the agenda is a recreation committee member's appointment. We have a memorandum saying that Debbie Smith and Sherri Ryan have resigned from the Newport Recreation Committee. And this is from Jamie Kongkwa, the chairperson. We have two new candidates for our committee, Susan Kylie and Carter Finnegan. They have been to our meetings and gone through the interview process. It is my recommendation that the council approves their seats on the committee. Both Susan and Carter are Newport residents and they've already participated in meetings and seem eager to help us move forward with fundraising and volunteer opportunities. Do I hear a motion to approve the two new members to the rec committee?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Lynn.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, so I have a motion and a second to appoint Susan Kylie and Carter Finnegan to the Recreation Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, nay? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item for discussion or on the agenda is the MCM second-floor lease ratification and anticipated vote. What we did was, we had to, just one amendment for the signatures that Mr. Congress had signed and then I signed. So, this is just a ratification, a two-year contract for the second-floor lease at the Gateway has been already taken care of. Do I hear a motion to approve the attached lease? No, it's a one-year with a, one-year, yeah. I'll make that motion.
Someone has a comment.
All right, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Can you just clarify because you said two-year and then I heard some mumbling, so I'm trying to figure out...
It was one-year.
It was one-year with possibility.
Okay.
The contract reads till 2025. The contract guideline in the contract says from June 23 to the end of May 25.
That's the possibility, I believe, isn't it?
But that would be a two-year contract? And you're saying we are doing a one-year contract?
One-year with the possibility of extending it to the second year.
Does that need to be clarified in the contract?
Yes, sir.
Will the, will the contract be amended to reflect that change?
This is the contract. It's been approved by our city lawyer and this is, it's already been signed. This is just a...
I'm confused.
...a ratification.
That makes no sense.
I'm, I'm... Here, I'm listening.
This lease shall commence on one June 2023, the commencement date, and shall continue for a term of two years through May 31st, 2025.
That's different than what you explained to a question I...
Yeah, it's only the, it'll only be one-year.
Isn't there a question of it being in violation of the city charter? It was beyond one-year.
Yeah.
Is the city attorney on?
No, they've already, he's already in another council meeting.
The city attorney's approved this?
Yes, it's already been approved by the attorneys.
Can I make the clarification? From what I'm reading, we're not voting on the lease.
No, it's already been signed. This is just informing you that it has been signed. The last meeting was pending or legal, changing the names of...
Recognized, Mr. President?
Yeah, you're recognized.
It, the lease says two years.
Yes.
But it was my understanding, after Dennis Chanet suggested that to be in conformance with the charter, the lease would only be for one year with an option to renew. And those are the words that should be in the lease, number one. And number two, there's a section in the lease that talks about things that are represented by the lessor and things that are represented by the lessee. And one of them seems to be absurd. It should, should clearly, I don't have it in front of me right now, but it should be what the lessees promises. It's about, I don't know, things that the lessee should be doing, not that the lessor promises. And finally, I noticed that the amount of security for the property that's in that lease is for a thousand dollars. Now, most of the time, you know, the people I know who rent want a first month and a last month, at least two months of security for, you know, a little apartment. And for a big place like the whole second floor of that building, I would think you'd want at least two years, I'm sorry, two, two months' worth of security.
Thank you for the comment. Yes, ma'am.
So, as I'm understanding of the dialogue that we're having now and you already shared that the city's attorney gave the sign off or to go through, but based on the information that's been shared, it was one-year based on charter, it looks like the attorney made a mistake. And maybe just, even though it's signed, I mean, time to do a, amend it and re-sign a new document.
The attorney in the past has leased it, or they've wrote up an agreement to lease it for three years in the past.
Well, the past is the past. It doesn't make it right.
Well, the city attorney says it is, so let's look like that.
This is not a discussion. Please have a vote.
All right, I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor of ratifying this lease, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Item number nine. And this is a fuel and propane pre-buy authorization. And this was come in a little bit earlier this year for the '23-'24 winter season because this is probably the lowest that the prices are going to be provided the fuel bill is not what they're doing. And what it is, is the pre-buy for '23-'24 winter season and the fuel is like, three thou, shoot, $3.179 per gallon and propane is 2.10 per gallon. The previous years, well, for '22-'23, that's what we just come out of, we're paying $3.67. So, this is actually cheaper. The price for propane has remained the same. So, this is with Fred's. Yes? Fred, okay. And discussion? No discussion, then do I hear a motion to go into the '23-'24 winter season for the pre-buys? Fuel at 3.17? And that's 19,000 gallons and 16,000 gallons of propane at 2.10 per gallon.
I move to approve these rates and authorize the programs record assigned, the pre-buy contracts.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Discussion? All those in favor, you say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Motion carries. So, we have the pre-buy, yes.
Mr. President, what other fuel companies submitted bids?
We've, they don't, it's always been Fred. Fred covers the entire city because some of them don't carry propane. So, rather split it, run...
So, does the city, so what's it bids or do you just hope they'll submit, somebody will submit to you? How does, how does that process work?
Fred called the city and advised us, because we've used them for years and years, that right now is the cheapest we can lock in. And if you're aware... And if you're aware, our friends in Saudis is just going to cut another million barrels a day, so we can anticipate prices going up some more. So we've locked in. Now, one of the... I shouldn't say that, because we're never fun. Vicious dog appeal. And with this... Do I have the owners? Is she just appealing? Is she here to you? Okay, we do have the owner, and we have our police involved down on... I hate to down near the Loop Road ledge that our dog bit.
Yes. Yeah, so I have Officer Kulikowski there. I'm not sure how you're going to do the hearing part of this, if you want him to go first, or if you want to say you to go first, I don't... I'm not sure, but he's here because he was actually the officer that was on-site both times.
I would let the police officer put out his part, and then we can re-bid.
Is this a microphone, Mark?
No. So...
Let me just turn it back on.
Des, is it on now? No. Okay. So my name is William Kulikowski, employed by Newport City Police Department. I was dispatched to a complaint of a dog that bit a neighbor in the area of the Loop Road in Newport, which is located off the Bluff Road. I have a couple of photographs here of the injury that was done to the complainant. At the time, when I responded on scene, the complainant didn't wish to pursue any criminal charges at the time, just wanted me to have an educational conversation with the dog's owner, Ms. Vaehue, over here. At that time, I made contact with Ms. Vaehue and let her know what had happened, and made some recommendations as to what she should do to rectify it so it wouldn't happen again. Some things that would be discussed was raising the height of her fence, as well as maybe putting the dog on a runner so the dog wouldn't jump the fence. At the time when this occurred, there was snow on the ground, which I understood that the fence wasn't high enough, so the dogs were able to escape. But again, just the same, we had the conversation that she should do something to rectify it so the dogs weren't a danger to anybody in the public. A little bit of time went by, and I'd have to look back at my notes here, but I received another complaint from Ms. Vaehue's neighbors about her dogs getting loose and dogs barking at them aggressively. When I spoke to Ms. Vaehue again about what had happened, and again, she advised me that she would, you know, take better control of her dogs. Several hours later, I received a third complaint about the dogs being loose, and even had chased the neighbors up their driveway all the way to their residence. So at the conclusion, I went back over and spoke to Ms. Vaehue, and she was issued two municipal warrants tickets for her dogs being at large. Any questions? They're, I believe, standard poodle. I believe that's what they are. Is that correct, Ms. Vaehue?
Yeah. So my name is Genevieve. So that was like, first of all, I want to say that I take responsibility for the action of my dogs. They said there's no bad dogs, it's just bad owner. So first of all, I want to thank you for, I mean, like, there's no bad dogs, they're just bad owners, that they need to train them good. That's what I mean. First of all, the incident that happened over the fence, yes, there was snow on the ground. The officer came, and unfortunately, one of my distant neighbor got bit on the lower leg. So the officer came that day, and I went to get a runner right away, pick and shovel, and the dog was on the leash for six weeks. And then I had to get my dogs together, because it's my dogs. I want to understand that, you know, I'm going to do everything to protect my neighbor, because I don't want to underestimate their fear. I understand what fear is, and I don't want to underestimate the fear of my neighbor, because I want peace and quiet in my neighborhood, and I know they want peace and quiet as well, so that's why I'm looking forward for that. So I need to write my notes, because I'm a little bit nervous. I've been nervous for six weeks with this whole thing. Unfortunately, my neighbor that, who has been complaining about my dog escaping, we don't have a big relationship, so of course, we cannot really talk like neighbors should. So that doesn't help either. And she is my right-of-way to the lake, and I think the mistake has been happening is like during the wintertime, I use my right-of-way to go on the icy lake to go through bars with my dog, and every time they escape, they go straight there to her yard. I think that whatever happened, happened. I mean, I'm trying to go forward, so I just want to say to the council what I've been doing so far to prevent, for the safety of my neighbor and make sure they're not in fear. So I did the six-feet fence. There's a place in the corner of my yard where there's about 50 people every day who walk during the summer, because it's a nice area to walk. So I put that six-feet fence high, so the dog doesn't even see who's coming, and so they're very high and protected. I elevated another fence, it was like four feet, I elevated back up to another six feet. So now I put a leash on them before I get out to go to the car, and actually, I've been using the dog park in Derby every day after that event to make sure that the dog can see other people, and that's normal to see other people, which that was my mistake, not to socialize them enough at the beginning. And another thing I've done too for the barking, is like I... The other... I have three sides, and my backyard is 75, I said 75 feet, so I did a big wall in wood privacy, and on the other two, I did like a, like a, it's called like a privacy tarp fence, so the dog doesn't even see the people when they go on the other side to decrease the barking. My son and my daughter-in-law, they're living with me for the last two months. We have been working on it. We have been doing the shock collars. Every time they start barking, they stop right away. They will bark, maybe five seconds, but it's not going to last long, because there's always somebody outside with them when they go outside now. Before, we let the dog out without supervision, but now they have supervision. And I think the last event that happened was April 11, that night when my dog stepped out in the middle of the night. To me, it's the middle of the night, it was 10:00, 10 o'clock, because I go to bed at 7:00 at night. So for me, was if the door was open, the dog was barking, it was windy, it was dark. They're never outside when they're dark, they were probably scared, but it doesn't excuse the whole thing. It just happened two times the same day. Came twice in my house, wondering what's going on, but I was sleeping that night. So I put a lock, you know, those hotel locks, where even the door is not shut down good, it would not open more than that. I did another lock, my son installed like an underlock, where you close, and there's ... Because I have grandkids who's coming, hi, Grandma, so they cannot do that anymore. There's like a lock, so if somebody come, they cannot just open the door. So there's no escape anymore. So I just want to show that I've been doing something to prevent that. And they're good dogs. My grandkids, they're one, three, and five, and they probably show them in the leash. I had to put a dog down before, because that one was vicious between the UPS, the FedEx, the Border Patrol. A lot of things happened, and I had to put it down. It was a very hard situation, and I'm willing to do whatever it needs to make sure those dogs stay with me as long as I can. And I've tried to do everything under the sun to make sure that's not going to happen. So since April 11, I don't think nothing happened. I'm not sure Charlotte, Charlotte, just my neighbor, she's the one who's having a rough time with my dog. I don't know, I don't think nothing really happened lately since the fence has been up and everything. But, you know, whatever suggestion I need, I just want to keep my dogs and their family dogs, and that's what I have to say.
Thank you. I think you pretty well done, everything that we would initially require you to do. Vicious animals are rough, because we've had to have a couple put down, one bit a kid in the face. For me, you have any... All I would say is, and hopefully, if it happens again, and it comes back here, then we're going to have to take a stronger step, and normally, it's move it out of town, and it's hard, because you live here. And then the last step is, as you know, have to put them down. That's really rough. I mean, we all have pets, and we love our pets. So I would say that you've done more than most people have done that have had vicious dog things, so.
Chief, have there been any further complaints?
No.
And the neighbor is here, I assume? Has it gotten better, or...
It has substantially got better, and it was really nice to hear from Ginny, that's a question I've been thinking about. And so definitely, the dogs are quieter, and they seem contained. And for me, it's not just my safety, it's people walking and others that aren't able to remove themselves quickly. For me, when the dogs were working in a cat situation, and I barely got in my door without one snapping my heel, so it wasn't so much about being scared, it was just protecting myself. And I'd love to see the same behavior and handling moving forwards would be amazing. I don't want to see any dogs harmed at all, and I want to stay here and I'll stay. Yeah. Thanks for letting me speak.
Although, I'm strictly a cat. Well, I would say this is complete this portion, and hopefully, I'm glad you came and explained it, and hopefully, it's not seeming right, we don't have to see you again. Thank you very much for what you've done, because sometimes it doesn't go easy, as we have to tell people how to take care of pets. So that's that one for there. Next item is new business. Mr. Johnson? No? Mr. Charbonneau?
Yeah.
I don't have any new business, Mr. Curtis?
Back it.
Back it? No? All right. No new business, we'll go on to old business. Mr. Johnson? No? No old business? None? I have no old business? None? None? All right? So we will set the next meeting, the next regularly scheduled council meeting will be on June 26, 6:30 PM. It won't be anything on the 19th, because that's a federal holiday, June 26. So the next meeting will be on the 26th. And next, I need a motion to adjourn. Make that motion. I have a motion to adjourn at that... I'll have 8:02. 20:02. Second. Mr. Curtis? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.